Open to the special board meeting in Pocahontas school district.
Alright, so we had made the decision to start meeting a little more frequently to discuss or go over items with the about the high school project. So I thought I'd just start out by just doing a quick summary of what I think we heard and talked about in the last sessions or the last regular meetings. So Mr. McBride was here and he talked, provided village options for three options to the board going down, I think nine, borrowing nine, 10, 11 million over a course of zero, one, or two mills. He also asked three questions. I think that was the key piece or a key piece of that that meeting. The first question was how much money would the board like to have in reserves at the end of the process? Or when it was completed? And what I wrote down and what I felt like we kind of got to, you got to as a board was wanted $5 million in reserves at the end of whatever this process was. And then the second question was what amount of debt surplus would the board want to retain? And I didn't feel like I heard a clear understanding from the board on what that looked like. You'll remember really it was three, kind of three buckets, more than what we currently have, what we currently have, or less than what we currently have. And there were some benefits to all of those. And then, so we didn't need to, probably need to get him an answer on that. And then how much help would the board want to request from the community? And we kind of talked about what that might look like, you know, the examples that Michael gave you as board members wasn't the zero, one, or two range. Obviously, you know, that could be anywhere in between there. You wouldn't have to, what he mentioned, if you remember is it doesn't have to be one. It could be less than anywhere between zero and whatever the board decided that would be. And it could be in increments of .01, right? I think the last time, if I remember, I think we settled it was somewhere around 3.84. So it could be, you know, wouldn't have to be one, or 1.5, or 1.25, or whatever. We also heard from Nathan, Anthony, and Todd Welch. They indicated that building costs right now are currently running between $350 and $425 a square foot, depending on what you're building. There was a little bit of discussion of, you know, kind of doing an average over the entire project might be a little, little dangerous because obviously building a safe room, dorm shelter is going to be a little bit more expensive than building a regular classroom. And so kind of provided a little bit of guidance there. What I took down was that board members, individual board members had mentioned the importance of considering placement of the project as well as displacement of students. That was something else that we talked about. And then they had indicated, Nathan and Todd had kind of indicated that, because we spent some time talking about gymnasium, gym space, that that might cost up to eight to $10 million. And so that was kind of a summary, a little bit. I did want to, I did want to bring your attention, you know, some of, I've had some individual conversations. As people have reached out and wanted to have individual conversations and and there's, you know, maybe some discussion that we need to have about can we pare the project back down? The answer is yes. You know, the way the state works is we have to ask for everything we want. And then we can always say, no, we're gonna, we're gonna pare this back down. What we couldn't do is say, well, we just want to look at academic space and then go back to them later on and say, okay, now we want to add a gym or whatever. We kind of had that conversation in this room at a previous, previous meeting. I did ask Dr. Stein to provide me some information on partnership money if we decided to do some other things. For example, if the board decided that a gym was something that we wanted either put off or not approached at this time. He did tell me that it does, and I figured it would, it would play with how much money the state is going to provide us. And so that is one of those discussions that if we entertain that, if the board entertains that, then we need to figure that reduction into the overall cost of the project. So that's kind of where we're at. I thought, you know, I know you may have individual things you want to talk about, but really my goal today is to try to understand or kind of get us to a point of what amount of debt service do we want to, does the board want to retain, you know, after this project is, is completed? Because we need that information to be able to give to Michael McBride to do updated financial analysis on behalf of the district. So that's kind of, and I did feel like, you know, what I heard, and I think most of us did, what I heard sitting there is, you know, I mean, it just, it seemed like the price kind of kept creeping up and creeping up.
I think it ended up being more than what we anticipated.
Exactly.
Forty-five million.
So that's why I kind of, you know, in order for, and I do have, I will tell you, I have a meeting with Todd on Friday in his office where I've asked him to give me, like I said, can we look at some, it's not even rough sketches. It's like blocks of if, you know, because Jennifer, I think you had mentioned, could we put it on the parking lot so we didn't have to displace students? Okay, sure, we can. So what is that going to look like from an architectural standpoint? What are the ramifications of that? And what are the financial implications? Right? If we put the, a new building on top of the existing space, what's it look like? Because what is different unless this board says we want to do something different, right? I've kind of gone in, gone into this project with the understanding of that rock building is going to stay where it's at. Because I think the community had the opportunity to weigh in on that. And my, my impression is, based on the information that I've gotten, they did. And that was something that is a
What that would say?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that's a hill we need. So what does that look like to have a smaller, a little bit smaller footprint and build it on that same site, but with the rock building where it is? Right? And what does that look like from a financial standpoint, from a space standpoint? You know, if we pull it this direction, how does that impact, for example, the other facilities in the, in the area? So he and I are going to have that information, that conversation on Friday. And then my goal, I'd like, as I told you in the email, I'd like for us to come back together next Monday and look at those options so that we can start whittling this down if that's the direction we want to go. So that's kind of what I have in the works. I think our goal today is to really sort of answer these two questions for Michael.
Concerning cost, I watched your guys' video of the earlier discussion. And of course, I saw the Napples come in with 275 to 375 to 425. I talked to a school builder around here that's probably built 50% of them right here. And they're doing a school right now for 275. It's not a high school. But he seemed to think 325 was a better figure for a high school. I don't want to say who it is, just because
Sure, I get it.
You know, he's gonna, he doesn't want to play his cards or whatever. But, and also I heard the 5.9 million for school, for, for ballfields. Sloan Ingers just got theirs for 2.3, their entire complex.
That's why I didn't know what Sloan Ingers
That cost 2.3 two years ago, 2023. And that was pretty much the height of spending. So I don't think it'll go up. It might go slightly up. But so that's just a, you know, I know I heard you say a lot about moving the softball fields or whatever. So, and also it seemed like you guys were concerned about making students move out. And that's something that's, you know, I brought my plans that I showed you guys a year or so ago about the plan for putting a building there in that one spot, tearing down those two small buildings, you know, building just enough for whatever, 15 classrooms, moving the kids into there, and then a year later tearing, even then, in the following summer, tearing the other building down, and then replacing it that year. Where it's a two-year process, but the kids don't, aren't losing anything. So just, you know, not saying we can go with that building that I've got. But, but I think that is probably the best idea is to find a place where you can throw up 15 classrooms and maybe a cafeteria, and then, and then, and then tear down the, you know, the ugly part all the way to the rock building, and replace it with something, maybe the gym and another more classrooms or whatever. That, I think, would solve the, an issue with, you know, having to move, move, you know, kids, and displace kids. And it doesn't have to be this, this drawing, but you know, that was just a start to kind of give you guys an idea of what, you know, what can be done. I talked to, let's see, I Googled a few other places. Around 307 was another school I found that's, that's under contract right now, in the process of building, 307 square foot. That was McCarter High School, McCarter Building School in Telkow. That's 307 square foot. So, you know, a person I talked to seemed to think that just because the Hoxie was 275, high school's going to be a little bit more, but they said probably better figure about 325, you know.
Well, Chad, you might ask a question. I'm just, I'm curious. How much would be safer in that to the price? I mean, I, I might
Well, Todd answered that. You know, about $50 a square foot. So
He said
150. Okay, so, but remember, it's only got to be 15,000 square foot?
They think, they didn't really figure, I think they were, they didn't have
The element was figured, because the payment did.
I think they figured it out, 8,000 square feet.
Whatever that square footage is, that's the only part you've got to add the 150 to. You said, I mean, so that, you know, and based off my figures here, I think, you know, if we can get by with 60,000 in classrooms and cafeteria and so on, and then we have an $8 million gym, that would be at 325 a square foot, that comes to 27.5. Remember, keep in mind that whenever Todd was here without a construction company doing these, you know, he's one of their customers. He, I said, hey, Todd, when you, if we gave you 25 to 28 million dollar budget and 80,000 square foot, can you think you could design something? And he said, yes. Remember that? I mean.
Well, I think the other thing, I think they're giving us the highest figures because they don't know if we want to build
For sure.
A value with, you know, $10 million worth of extra windows in it, or, you know, exactly what our style is. So I'm going to say that's going to have a big barrier.
But remember, I said you guys emailed about the Corney School, about figuring about 2 million square foot, 2 million square foot for that. And that was a high school, that was an administration building, that was a mill school altogether. But they haven't actually got bids yet back. Their architect has just figured, you know. So I think we just, you know, I mean, you know, my opinion on raising money. I'm all for just doing an 11 million dollar bond, and that's it, you know, and make it work. But, you know, you guys.
But I think what we had talked about last week was if we do that, we're depleting, we're depleting the building fund, and we're starting back over.
Well, that's still 3 to 5 million in there.
But I think
Yeah, that's, that's there now, but you can't just depend on that. That's going to dwindle down as you start doing the other projects in the building. And doing it that way with that number, that gives you zero room to give teacher raises.
Well, remember, I mean, I crunched the numbers on what's, we have extra every year. And I, I think a million dollars a year will continue to go further than that. Because if we have this budgeted for a high school,
How's a million going to go in there? We're only putting 700,000 in there currently. We're going to add 300,000 to it?
We put over $2 million in there for the last four years, historically.
Well, I think, I said, I'll go ahead.
I don't expect to continue to do that, because remember, that's one of, one of the things I did was we put 1.4 in there last year to reset, push the reset button on, on how we were doing that. Because the pre, the years prior to, when I looked at it, the years prior to me, going back about three years, the, what was happening is the district was spending all of their local money and then not spending their 2,000 money. And it should have been backwards, right? And so in order to reset that, you know, we should, in my opinion, we should spend every dime the state gives us every year, because that's what the state says it costs to, or that's the, it's not, that's not, I shouldn't say that right. That's, it's not an expense. It's like, this is what we've calculated
It's an expectation.
To give you, right? And so, right. And so in essence, the reason that's important is because when they look at that from a legislative audit, which they're doing right now, I mean, like a, the legislators are sitting down there and they're looking at, I think they call it what? It's some kind of interim study session right now. And they're looking at how much money a, school districts are spending. And what they do is they go to that 2,000 fund, and they look and they see, if you have, let's say you've got 2 million, this, you know, across all schools in the state, there's $20 million, let's just say, I'm just pulling numbers, that was not spent out of that 2,000 fund. Then what the state does, what legislators do is they say, oh, well, I guess they don't need that 20 million dollars. So we can cut that somewhere else, right? When the truth is, we should be spending all of the state's money and then using our local money, the way we see, the, the way the board sees fit, right? And in essence, right, what we have done in the previous, previous years is we were spending all of the local money and then holding on to some of the state money. And the message you send the state when you do that is, we don't really need your money. We're gonna, we're gonna put it in our pockets. Well, that's not true, right? If we're going to put any money in the coffers, it should be our local money, right? So that's why we did that. I do not expect to continue to do that. I don't expect to continue to do it this year, quite honestly, right? Because we reset. Now, we'll have to look at it, because this will be the first year of doing it to see where we're at. We are currently moving some expenses around to see where we're at. And I think this year will give me a little bit better understanding of what is our excess now going forward, right? That we have that's discretionary after we've paid all of our bills and done everything we needed to do.
Well, it sounds like we're really just missing 2 to 5 billion dollars, is what it sounds like. If we don't want to take 11 million for bonds. There's really just 2 to 5 billion that, that everyone really thinks that we, we could use more, right? Is that correct?
I mean, based on your number of being that ballpark, but I'm, I'm still don't see a school getting built for a million dollars less than it was going to be five years ago. I don't see how that's possible.
Remember, that was 120,000 square foot back then, too. So here's, here's the actual number for the Hoxie School. 65,000 square feet? 19 million.
But they're building an elementary school.
Exactly. We had another million to it for a high school, right?
Without
Without safer, right?
No, but there's safer in there. It's all got safer. So about the same square footage we're looking to do minus the, the gym, 19 million is what is contracted this year, right? That's, it's not like corporate money. $20 million, let's say, we say, hey, a high school, hopefully we can get it in there for 20. We had 8 million to it, which is what I think the Napples was throwing out. Yeah, 8 to 10, but, you know, and that's 28 million. So I don't think, I mean, I, you know, I heard you say
It's hard to say what it's going to cost, though. I mean, I very
So what's the
If we knew that, but once you go in, in August, we got to make a decision whether or not we want to do a village. We have to, I mean, we can't run short.
My issue with the village, I think he said 11, 11 million dollar bond, 11 million dollar bond and a 2 mil increase puts us neutral.
Well, I'm fine doing a village in here. But what is our plan if action fails?
Well, I mean,
Well, at no point, I don't want to compromise our financials for any building.
No, you're right.
And that's the 11 mil, 11 million and the 2 mil increase puts us where we are right now.
And that, your question that you asked, where I, I personally stand on that. I really like the idea of staying neutral.
See, I don't
I don't either.
I don't like
I don't think, I don't think you can stay neutral.
I think neutral is your base. I mean, that's a bare minimum.
I don't see how you get to teacher any kind of raises if you stay neutral.
We're better than that now at neutral.
I, I will say this, and I've been thinking about this since, since last, last week. I would, I would be nervous using any kind of excess for raises. You want to use it for bonuses, that's one thing. But using it for raises, because what happens is
Built-in permanently.
You're only going to be able to do that one year. And then it is built-in permanently. And so let's say that, let's say that we just, we say, okay, we're gonna, and I'm just gonna throw out numbers. We're gonna up that from a $750,000 debt revenue, you know, excess debt revenue to a million dollars. Okay, fine. Then what we're gonna do is we're gonna take 250 of that, let's call it, and give some raises. Well, guess what? Now we're right back to, and, you know, that, the idea is, if I'm an individual and I want my, my, the, I'm going to continue being in the district. I'm gonna, so next year, or in five years, if we do it in five-year chunks, my raise is going to be even more. And and we didn't get by new, we didn't, so now you're eating into that, let's say, another 150,000, just because we're giving, we want to give bonuses for experience and educate, and, you know, all these things. So we didn't change anything. And now what we're doing is we're chipping away at that excess debt revenue. At some point, you're gonna have, the board's gonna have to say, okay, look, we can't do this again, or we're gonna have to go out and ask for more revenue. The only way, here's the thing. The way a school district gets revenue were two things. One, one is to increase the tax burden, and one is to increase the number of kids attending school. Those are the only two mechanisms for revenue, right? And one of the mechanisms, I'm not going to say it's the only one, but one of the mechanisms that entices kids to come to school is, am I going to, am I going to a, a building that was built 70 years ago? Or am I going to a building that was built two years ago, or three years ago? Right? And so they're all, again, I can't quantify it for you. Do I believe that there's a number of kids who are going to other school districts that we have named in the, because of that, I do. What's the number and what's the revenue? I don't know. But I do think that with the change in the business organization, you know, I mean, there are new businesses that are coming into Pocahontas, and those, they're going to bring families. And those families are going to have a choice on where to go to school. Do we want them to choose Pocahontas? I do. I know you do. So what do we have to do to make that the choice? Which brings me back to what I said. Whether anybody in this room likes it or not, education is a business now. They have options. And I know, Chad, I know how you are, you're kind of a minimalist when it comes to this stuff. But if you don't have some of the bells and whistles and, and all that kind of stuff, they're not going to come to school here. And this school is going to continue to decline, even with the new high school. It just is what it is. Now, but the other part of that to me is, that's why I want to lay out options. I understand we're on a compressed timeline because of the state money and whatnot. But this is where we need, we're in the past, where you talked about, where y'all done, y'all made a decision on what the school was going to look like, and then went to the public and asked for money. I think that was a mistake. You need input from the community on what they want the school to look like. And now they made the choice on what bells and whistles they wanted. Now you ask for the money. Here's what y'all want. Here's how much it's going to cost. Here's how much y'all are going to have to pay. Because to me, that makes the most sense, because now they're educated on, you can have their brand-new gymnasium. You can, we can move the baseball and softball complex, and it can be its own entity and do all these things. But here's how much it's going to cost. So y'all got to pony up.
Well, we can't do it.
Well, it sounds like you're looking forward to mills, or village increases. But what's the plan if it fails? I mean, what's the plan?
I mean, to me, the only thing that basically, if, if the gym is included in the plan, to me, that's the easiest cut. It's a huge chunk of money. If the village
We don't have to have it. We took it from the state.
We don't, we just, we just don't take, we get 4.8 instead of the 7.
Well, along that line, let, let me, I do a slight thought, I've been looking at it a lot. And the guys, first of all, we're all on the same team here, and I will support what the majority of the board votes to do. I, I will support that decision. And though I may disagree with it, I will support it. But in my opinion, our number one priority for Pocahontas school district is a high school building. I've said that repeatedly. Y'all don't be. I've been involved in athletics here for over 40 years. Love athletics. And I think we need to keep, it's a great thing. Kids need that. But right now, if you look at our buildings, the high school, I think we all see that. Here's one thing. I run the numbers. Now, this is just roughly, but what they told us the other night, and I figured it on $400 a square foot. That's including the safer. If we did a addition, Craig, you, you remember the plans we talked about, replacing the main pod in the math and science wing?
But we're leaving math and science, right?
Well, the old one.
Okay, okay. By the, the connecting
If you, if you replace those two areas, and Craig's got it all worked up on classrooms, he, he's done a lot of work on it. And it would, it worked, what you had. That would enable us to move that ninth grade over, because we'd lose revenue because of the ninth grade, you know, on square footage on the P O R. If, if we, we looked at that just by itself, we could build a first-class high school, not something, I mean, with the 10-foot walkways like Nathan said. All they figured on is those small corridor. High school kids got to have wide corridors. That's more money. So it actually might grow a little bit from 80,000. But if we concentrate on that figure, that $400 a square foot, you talk about 32 million for a brand-new main wing with all these other, the only thing outside that classroom would be business and aggregate.
Which I don't agree with. I, I, I think if the goal all along is going to get kids under the same building, why are we living in the business building? Where we're crossing Parkmont.
It's going to cost you more money.
To put two classrooms in? I mean, literally, there's two classes in that building.
I mean, I'm totally
I mean, you know, I mean
I don't disagree with that at all.
It doesn't
It all comes down to money. But you're talking about, and if you include that, let's say if that was drawn up, Todd could draw that in there. I think that'd be great.
I just, it just doesn't make any sense.
You look at 32 million, pair that 400 a square foot. I think we can afford that. Now, you look at 32 million, you've got to add about 4 million to that. You've got architect fees, you've got C M V, you've got technology fees, you've got furniture.
So then you build a building, then, then two years later, we come back and say, okay, now we need a new gym.
Well, no, let me finish. Yeah. Build that within mind that the next project will be the gym. We can earmark $2 million in our building fund to say, we're gonna, it's not
So you're saying if the, if the village fails?
No, 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 no. I, I, we might be able to do this without village. I don't think so. But I think we'll need 36 million. But what I'm talking about is, we do this and say, okay, our next project is going to be a gym. And then it's going to take time. But what we've done, guys, we've provided our kids, it's like Chris said, with a first-class educational facility. And I just think that's a win-win, you know? It's, everything takes time. And down the road, you know, we can start saving money for a gym, just like, we started saving this money in 1995, that you see right now. We started it in 1995. We used part of it for the elementary. We built, you know, the junior high gym with it. We built the cafeteria M D, you know, we built athletic complex. All that come from reserves. So from our building, building fund. So you see, I mean, it's just an idea. I mean, like I told you guys, I'm, I'm going to support whatever
But I see, I see it from like, if you're going to ask me for a mill anyway, and you're already going to spend 35 million, why don't just do it all at the same time?
Okay. If you do that, we may be talking about, if we have to ask for village, under two mills, you may be talking six mills. Do you think that will pass?
I don't think we're talking six mills, though.
Well, to build a gym, it's going to be between 8 and 10 million.
So I'm, I'm going to bring us back to, we, Michael's not going to be able to give us a good financial snapshot of what that looks like until we answer his two questions. And I agree. I was just sitting there looking at that to bring you back to that point. But here's my problem. On the third question, with his numbers, his numbers, the numbers you got in the meeting, they're all over the place. Right. But he's going to give us, though, I mean, in essence, in essence, what we're going to do is, is I think the board has to say, okay, you know, we want, we want, we want to have 5 million when we're done, okay? We want a debt surplus of, you know, again, something similar? Let me ask you a question on the debt surplus situation. So if we're doing the village, let's just say we're going hypothetically with the village increase. We want to go, let's just make our number even 750 that we're putting in the savings right now. You're saying the issue you have is if we increase that debt village, and then we start shifting it over to salaries, that's going to cause a problem in the future. And I don't really understand that. Because if it's, if it's at 1.5, we use half of that 750 over the next
And I don't really understand that, 'cause if it's, if it's at one point five, when you use half of that seven fifty over the next however many years, we're just still back to debt neutral.
And that's, and that's okay, as long as, as long as the board has an understanding of, how many years are we gonna make, make that run? Because once you hit, let's say, let's say that you want a debt excess, excess debt revenue to be a million dollars, but.
Well, no, my, my debt excess revenue would only be that high initially, because we have to have that to switch it to salaries, knowing that ultimately the goal is to get it down to, let's just say, five hundred thousand, that's where.
And that's fine.
Everybody's comfortable with.
Right.
So you gotta raise the debt surplus to whatever level you think you need it to, to give the raises, before you, and you gradually, you will get down to your number.
And that is.
Again, my goal was, the raises we gave just now, I think, I mean, just the teachers that I've spoke with, with, they were half insulted based on the rates. I understand we did it to get them something, but the big picture to me was the discrepancy from a brand-new teacher to a twenty-year teacher has to get significantly larger over time.
And that's fine, I guess my, what I'm doing is I'm trying to look out, you know, let's say, five to, seven to ten years, right? And having an understanding of, right now, and I, the, the state is, and they're gonna give us eighty-three next year, and then they're gonna back that down to eight thousand, but yes, they're taking out the cost of the insurance, so my, my calculations is, will be a plus two hundred thousand dollars, let's call it, I think I figured like two hundred thirty-six thousand or something like that, right? The, 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 I, I mean, you guys know this as, as, as well as anybody, that nobody wants salaries in any business to be stagnant. Right? In any business, and the school district's not any different. So, you know, if you're gonna pay, you know, if Chad's gonna pay more money to his carpenters or his planners, or you, you know, even the guys working your, your cash register, that revenue's gonna have to come from somewhere, right? You're gonna have to re- get more revenue. And my point is that that excess debt revenue is gonna carry us out, how long? Three years? I don't know, I mean, I, three years, five years, ten years, whatever that year-long is, but then at that point, it will be exhausted, because you can't, I mean, unless you're gonna keep going back to the community to ask for more mills, which I don't think is a great idea myself, then at some point, that revenue's gonna have to be shifted over to, it's coming because we're got, we get more kiddos, right?
And I, I think all the other improvements, again, you can't quantify, but I think there is more revenue coming in, because I think even some of the kids that are currently gone, if you got this school with the next two years, some of them come back naturally, 'cause they already live here. So it's easy, now they got the, now we've got the new shiny whatever.
So if you look at the questions, though, like, I think you had mentioned presenting it to the community as if to match us. So if we say we have seventeen million dollars, whether we use it all or not, we have seventeen million dollars, and you present to the community to match that, basically that seventeen million, what would that look like in a mill?
A lot.
A lot.
Well, you can't look at it as a millage in like one year, two, that's over the ground.
What would that be?
So, so my, the way I was looking at it, is I was looking at it, okay, we've got this savings account money that we've set aside, that's our building fund, and we're gonna use a portion of that. And out of this excess debt service, which right now is about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, my advocation was, why doesn't the district say, okay, we're gonna take a hundred thousand dollars of that seven hundred and fifty thousand, and we're gonna apply it to a debt payment? So we're gonna take the burden off of the community of a hundred thousand dollar debt payment a year, but we still can't get there with just that payment, right?
How much is that payment?
Four mill.
So basically, it's like if I borrowed money for thirty years.
Which is about three.
How much is that extra money bringing in? Every, every dollar, every mill is bringing in two hundred thousand more a year, right? So, if we need to bring in eight hundred thousand dollar more, more to pay a, pay a twenty, a fifteen million dollar payment on a thirty-year loan, it's gonna end up being twenty-five billion in actual payments out.
Yeah.
So you divide that by four, and that's eight hundred thousand, so that'd be four mill to get you fifteen million extra.
Oh, where the course.
Oh, of course.
But see, that's also the part where, I mean, not, I mean, Chad related this too, and I can't, the business, I'm not gonna name anyone else, but that's where, when you run a business, the, the public has to understand, because that two hundred mills, two hundred thousand per, per mill is just based on today. If we get more kids in here, that number increases per mill over the time more money that comes in, am I correct?
Well, you get it, you get that, you get that dollar amount based on.
Well, okay, over, over assessment, so whether, the more your school grows, the more that number goes up.
That number, the state money gives it to us, it goes up.
Right, so, but my point is, is you're doing that based on growth. So now, some of those growing things, you're talking about, we're gonna give those little yearly raises, it's almost like you don't really gain anything, you just stay neutral, because as that grows, that money just goes out amongst. But people who don't run a business don't understand it's how it works, you can't give exact numbers. Some of this is projected on growth and anticipation, and that's the best we can do. But they've gotta understand that, that's why I like these things being public, because when things don't go perfectly, they have to understand, we did lie to you. We did it on this expectation, because that's all we can do, is make a projected growth on what the schools wanna do. That's the best we can do, and here's why we said the numbers we wanted. Granted, it didn't turn out exactly like we thought it would, the first three years or whatever, but I just want them to understand the process every step of the way, so someone doesn't come back and say, you lied to us again.
Now, I will, I, now, this is, this is a complicating factor, but I think it is worth understanding that this is the, this is the environment we're in, right? The information I'm getting from a, from the, um, that captive insurance project that the, the state has put together, is if, I mean, right now, going into next year, so this year, up through this year, our deductible was ten thousand dollars. It's ten thousand dollars on any claim that we have, right? Next year, the, that cost is going up, that deductible's going up to, it's looking like fifty thousand dollars per occurrence, right? So if you had a, if you happen to have a season where you had a tornado and a flood that impacted a school building, that's two occurrences, right? And they're on their way, this is what we've been told, they're on their way to a deductible that is ten percent of the replacement value of the building. So, let's take the elementary school, if a tornado.
It's good to have a nest egg in your building fund, like.
If a tornado, right, so if a tornado comes through and takes that, that building, under the.
It ain't gonna take long to wipe out your nest egg.
It's not, right? So I think you have the, you have to plan, I think the district going forward is gonna need to plan on, two million dollars out of that building fund is always sitting there just to cover the insurance deductible. Period, right? Now, that's, that's, what, forty percent of your five million dollars that would be sitting there right now? So now, if you've got a building fund where two million dollars is sitting there to cover the deduct- deductible, and let's say two million dollars is there as seed for a gymnasium or a future building project, that leaves you one million dollars, which is not a whole bunch, quite honestly, if you had to have, if, if there was some kind of large maintenance project you needed to do.
My gut is just telling me going forward, I don't think there's any way that we can even start into this process without a millage increase.
I think they're shooting. I mean, I know you had a three twenty-five or three whatever, but I, when I kinda spoke with T J outside of visiting with Nat Holtz last week or whatever, and he said he felt like, get those numbers that they were giving us are, are low compared to like some of the other schools, the Brooklyn School they're building, that like, he, we needed to look on the higher end.
Well, I'm actually coming out with numbers that are being under construction now, so.
But, I mean, you're, you gotta look at like comparable districts, Hoxsey's not comparable to us. I mean, I know it's building, but it's the bells and whistles and the things and the kids.
I still wanna know the difference, like, just on baseline, what's the difference price-wise that you said, whatever, three or two seventy for the elementary school? Like, what is the actual number? If you just apples to apples and say, well, this is no longer an elementary school, it's a high school.
Well, if you go look at our.
Why does it increase?
Yeah, why does it? That's what I'm wondering too.
I don't understand, it's a hallway's a hallway, a classroom size is a classroom size.
Ceilings are sixteen foot tall in the elementary school.
The building materials are exactly the same. I get, there might be a couple little things, maybe you can make the hallways more narrow.
That, that's the way, Chris, I mean, actually, when they come in with the building plans over there, you know, uh, we, you know, we dropped the ceilings, we, we cut a million and a half.
But even with technology, that's not a construction thing, that's a technology. I'm just, I'm just getting on the, I don't understand.
I like that number, and I wish we could get close to that.
I mean, what, how far along do we have to get before we get actual bids? Will someone give, I mean, I guess we have to have the plan laid out?
Yeah.
Well, so on, okay, so on, I expect, based on the conversation I have with Todd, that on Friday, he's gonna give me, okay, you can put it over the parking lot, and it's gonna cost you X million dollars. You can leave it right where it is, and it's gonna cost you Y million dollars. You can, you know, so I, I, you know, in general, not, not like solid, but in ballpark, right? I mean, that makes sense, right? If you build a, a building over here where there's not a lot of trees, and there's not a, then you're probably gonna be, that, if you have to take down trees. I think all of that, and I'm just gonna keep coming back to this, I think we're trying to get the cart before the horse a little bit, right? The second question you all have to answer as a board is, where do you wanna be? Do you want to retain a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar debt excess per year? Do you want that to go up, or do you want that to go down?
I get that, but all the questions that are being currently answered are directed at number three, but we can't answer number three without that information.
Right, yes, I need, so we, if, if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna work on the half of this.
We're all gonna agree on it, I don't think we're all gonna agree on it, so I mean, we should just take a majority and go for it.
That's up to you all, right? I'm, I'm.
Do you need a number, or do you?
You know, like, not going above eighty-five percent.
No, I, I think what we need is, is I need, here, here's the thing, if, if everybody's sitting here, if everybody's sitting here is like, okay, we don't wanna go below what we currently have, which is seven hundred fifty thousand, then anything that takes us below that needs to, like, out.
I think we're all start, all start.
We all agree.
I, I think that's.
My number is five hundred thousand. And that, that being said, that will give us eleven million dollar borrowing power, and that will add to our twen- our seventeen million, and that will achieve what we're looking for now.
Where, where's the teacher's savings?
No, no, let me ask you, that's a very simple question.
Where?
How much of that excess revenue?
It costs two hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars to give you the little raise we just gave them.
We could've given a little more.
Just gotta come out of that.
But if the surplus goes down even more.
Well.
I think just about a year.
I mean, it's a, you know, we, we can always use a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred thousand or a million five hundred thousand.
Just if, if rebuild fencing, if.
And it's been less since I've been on.
But that may have become, that may have come out of the.
And that's a lot.
I mean, I'm not.
That may have been a question.
Maybe the number you're giving.
Yeah, so. So, to answer your question, for the last ten years, I don't think the district spent very much of the excess debt revenue at all, I think they, they.
And I was.
Yeah, yeah, so.
To try to do where we're at today.
Because.
We've gone from five million in our savings accounts to seventeen million, you know? So that's over the last four, five years.
Okay, so.
A lot of that's just moving numbers.
So what I think, okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna put this out in a different, in a different place since Chad's gotten it started. Is there anybody who's willing to go lower than five hundred thousand?
No.
Cause that would not be my suggestion. I mean, five hundred thousand was where I, that was the, where I started.
Their baseline start.
And that was, that was the idea of, you know what, we're gonna take a little bit of our excess debt service, and we're going to put it on the table, and that was our contribution in addition to the building fund.
It's pretty, it's pretty.
That's what you're supposed to do.
Well, I think.
Right?
You're the ones that gotta make that decision. None of us are qualified, but it can be done, and we don't work here.
Well, that's our job, Gary.
Yeah, that's his job.
Well, that's, that's why I'm asking.
The realist, right?
I think, I think if I'm the lowest, I'm willing to go to the riskiest, is what you can say. That everyone else is not willing to go risky, well, that means we don't have enough money for a fund. That means that we're not, we're only gonna be able to get our seven to eight million dollars instead of eleven.
Not necessarily. Not necessarily.
If we stay there where we're at seven fifty thou, that's only a seven million dollar loan. Not eleven million, is it?
No, because what we're doing is we're in a, that's, that's why, what we're gonna do is we're gonna answer these questions. I'm gonna give it to Michael, and Michael's gonna give us back the, the table for the next thirty years on what our principle is, what our interest is gonna be, what our coverage is, and what our excess is gonna be. So I'm gonna tell him that, in answer, I'm gonna tell him that no less than five hundred thousand dollars, because if you remember, there was a couple of options that he brought us, that were like four hundred, four hundred forty-three, and.
Yeah, having no less than five, but targeted the seven fifty.
Now, that would be the same.
I think the number needs an increase, I mean, y'all keep saying that, dude, I just don't think it's over here possible now.
So what's your top bid? Let's do that.
You want more money?
I think more.
Well, it's, it's not, it's not, and, and that's, I'm understanding this incorrectly, that number has to be more to shift over to salaries when, once it starts coming in.
Well, keep in mind that it's been going into our building fund, that seven hundred thousand.
Now, are you asking to?
Well, we haven't been given any salaries.
I'm just asking.
They were on freeze.
I'm just asking for discretionary, excess discretionary income, that's really what we're talking.
The way Dr. Arbocker explained it last time, if we, I'm just throwing this number out arbitrary, we got a million in surplus, and now we decide we're gonna take two fifty of that to dedicate to salaries, we're just taking that now. Now, this number's seven fifty, this two fifty just goes and takes that number from eighty-three to eighty-five or whatever.
Well, actually, I wouldn't calculate it that way, the way I'm gonna calculate it, because I think this is accurate, right? This district has, has really worked hard, and I've really tried to, to stay in that realm of that seventy-eight to eighty-two. We've kinda creeped up a couple of, couple of spaces, you know, we're closer to eighty-four, but my, my calculations for next year, if we do the plan that I shared with you, the calculations bring that back down to, to eighty-two percent for the following year. Now, one thing that I've heard in, around our, our discussion is, that might not be enough to, you know, I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna insult anybody, but I also am not gonna put the district into financial straits, you know, over that, because I'm gonna take us back to, under the current plan, we are paying more per teacher, we are, our salaries are higher than everybody else in the area of, of all, by, by at least five hundred dollars, right? I, I think I shared that information with you. We don't get, we don't get to second place until ten years, right? If you're with the, ten years, eleven years, so then we get to second place, and it's gonna take roughly four to six thousand dollars per employee who has ten years or ten to twenty-five years of experience.
And that's the number I wanna know, that's the number I was asking for at school board meeting, because that's the one that matters, the ten years plus, that's where the discrepancy's at, that's where we gotta make it right.
And, and that's, that number's gonna, well, that number's gonna change, because every year, and so I haven't run it yet, right?
But at least give us a baseline, give us what it is based on today's staff situation, just a number. Cause we have nothing to work with right now, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and, and we can figure that, right? I mean, that's, it'd be a, it'd be kind of a flexible.
That number did take what I would ask, answer on the second question, for me, cause that's the number I wanted up.
But I think it, you know, we used to have a scale, one through.
Well, we used to have a lot of things, but that's not here anymore, so we gotta do a new rules.
Covid, I mean, not covid, because of.
Learns Act.
The Learns Act, you know, that's, that's out, and, and I think, you know, we started with the, the, uh, the thing you're doing with experience and all that, that's a start, but I do agree, you know, we need to increase that. I think this is gonna take four to five, six years, but I, I'm like Chris, I think we need to give those valued employees more money, but I think it's gonna take time.
Right, it's gonna take time to roll it out, but the, the public has to understand, if we're asking for, I'm just throwing it out, four mills, the reason why we're asking for them, it's not just the school to get all these things done in the next five years, cause you can't, I don't wanna do anything five years from now, go back and say, all right, now we do that millage increase to get the teachers their raises. Cause I think in that five-year window, if you're not doing so many incrementally for the teachers, they're just gonna keep heading out the door.
I think they have.
And they're gonna have a school district full of teachers of ten years less experience, and half of them aren't even gonna be served for it.
I, I will say this, I think if you looked at the history of millages for teacher raises, you're gonna see most of them, a great majority of them were voted down.
I, my bottom, I mean, my bottom, the minimum I would like to see is stay neutral.
Well, then where else are we gonna get the money?
I'm not saying I don't want it to go up.
I'm just asking, where else can the money come from to give teachers raises if it's not included in this package? So I'm, I'm asking that, cause I don't know. Where else could the money come from without cutting something else?
The state, the state will give it to us.
It comes from enrollment.
Yeah.
It comes from enrollment, and it comes from increased foundation money. Because we have, we, and I mean, I think it is, the, again, the more superintendents I talk to, I think it is wise that you tie that, especially in this area, that you tie that, that teacher salary to the, the operating, right? And if the goal is, it's gonna be eighty-two percent or eighty-three percent of operating, right? Take that, take, I mean, we get, we're gonna get eighty-three hundred this year, you're gonna get eight thousand. Take that, take, I mean, we get, we're gonna get eighty-three hundred this year, you're gonna get eight thousand next year, right? I mean, for the following years, so take eight thousand, multiply by nineteen eighty-eight, that's our current, that's what we're current, and then uh, multiply by point eight two, that's the amount of money you have for, for teacher salaries. And when a teacher comes in or when a teacher calls you and says, there's too many kids in, you fill in the grade level, we need another teacher, subtract that off the raises, right? I mean, those are the conversations, those are the tough conversations that ha, that we have to have with each other. We can get another teacher, but when we do that, we forego raises. We can go raises, but we're gonna have to continue or maybe we're gonna have to be a little bit more tight than, you know, twenty-one kids in a class, maybe we need twenty-five kids in a class, maybe we're gonna have to maximize that to get as much, as much ra, money available for raises as possible. Those are the ba, those are the dances that we have to do from a, a central office perspective to say, okay, we want to get as much money in the hands of our, cause here's the thing, when we get money in the hands of our teachers, guess what? The teachers put money in the hands of our local business owners and our, you know, local economy. And so it's good for everybody to do that.
So, so we can move on to the third question, I'll say that this make it a million, so we're going from between five hundred and a million on the surplus.
I just, I mean.
Okay, yeah, I put five to nine based on what I was hearing, but I mean, we can, and then to me, that third question is really answered by Michael providing more uh, models to the board and saying, look, we can get you nine hundred thousand dollars in excess, we can get you eleven million dollars and it's gonna cost you four and a half mils to do it, I'm just making up numbers, right? So I think one of the things, and I know we're getting close to one o'clock, one of the things I would encourage you to think about individually is what is your top number, right, for a millage rate? We know you, I mean, I know based on what I learned when coming into the community that the community has voted down three point eight four. I've had conversations where individuals have stopped me in the park or at, on the street at Walmart and have used words like asking for the sky at three point eight four, right? So that tells me that the people who are at least talking to me, and I know not everybody talks to me, just like you know, not everybody talks to you, right? That those folks, they thought it was too high. So what is, I mean, you guys are, one of the, one of the beautiful things about a school board is you're all members of the community, right? You all have people who talk to you and you talk to people and you have a, a pulse, you have an idea of what those who are in your frame of reference are, are willing to do, so is, if
Well, I can throw this in, I, I talked, of course, in my district, it was only people in my district, I talked to, which I had a lot of farmers, it's resoundingly, no, we will not support. Uh, then the second question about, what if we, you know, just what are you gonna build? To the one we're talking about, said from over from, they said, you know, if you build a new high school, you know, I said, what, what would you support a two and a half mil, we just put that out there. And they were, they were more receptive to that, but anything over three? No.
So I think that's
That's just in my district.
That's what you guys, that's what I need your help understanding, right? Because that's the information Michael's gonna provide to you as board members is, he's gonna provide a, you know, if, if the budget is thirty-two million dollars, let's say, then, and, and these are the numbers you wanna be at, then he's gonna give us some options on how do we get to thirty-two million dollars, right? If the number is thirty-five or forty or whatever number this group wants to, wants to get comfortable with, and that, that number is also gonna be based on the millage, right? You're gonna look at it and go, well, we know anything over three and a half or four, probably is a no-go anyway, so we're gonna have to start ratcheting it down. Maybe our budget isn't forty million dollars, maybe our budget is thirty million dollars. Well, we can do that for eleven million dollars and, and two mils and we think everybody would be happy with that. You see where I'm going? So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna meet with Todd on Friday, I'm gonna give between, after we get done with this meeting, I'm gonna give this information to Michael and I ask him to make, create some models and then if you guys are all good, Monday at noon, we'll come back and we'll look at the information I have from Todd, we'll look at the information that I, I get from Michael and
Monday, I, I've got MRI, I'll catch you.
Okay.
Uh, but, but it's hard to get, get a, a poll.
I know, yeah.
So how are you?
Well, what we could, what we could do is we could maybe meet individually at some point and I'll just go over that information with you.
Or, or I just, my appointment is actually, I'll be there towards twelve fifty.
That's fine.
How are you gonna, how do you wanna present a vote? Cause I mean, I, I'm just gonna say, right, I'm gonna vote no to anything dropping at less than where we are.
We don't need a vote right now, this is just, you've provided me information to guide the process, right?
This'll get us to a millage.
Then what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna bring you options and then you all
But I feel like you did bring us options, so how much more is he gonna bring us, like?
No, I'm whittling, I'm trying to whittle this down. Cause right now you have
We don't know where at thirty or where at fifty million that it's gonna cost.
Right now you have nine options in front of you, I think that's too many.
Well, I mean, that, you can cut half of them out, I mean, I feel like you could've cut half of them out.
So you're just gonna go to, you're gonna go to Michael or Todd for these numbers?
I'm gonna go to Michael for the finance numbers, I'm gonna go to Todd for the, you know, what is this gonna look like if we build it on top of the parking lot? What does this look like? And I don't mind taking that with me if you'll, if you'll let me have it.
Yeah, just remember that if he's by himself, it'll be a lot better deal.
He is by, it's just him and me and, and Craig.
And, uh, you know, he'll, he's labeled, because I remember him specifically, I don't know if you remember, I said, if we give you a twenty-five or twenty-eight million dollar budget in eighty thousand square foot, can you make that work? He said, I think so, and so
My, my big, and I agree with that, but what does that look like? Is that look like
We can't build a prison, like, these people wanna be proud of what we're building.
That's why, I could tell you honestly, when the board, when the millage was paid, the board came back with a plan written by Todd, Craig kept a lot with it and what he drew up, once we looked at it, it was resoundingly one hundred percent. The community will hang us if we built that.
Well, you keep in mind though, the proposal that you came out with was a lot of bells and whistles needed done.
No, this is the second time.
Well, either way.
This, it was concrete
I'm willing, I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer your question pretty succinctly though is if the millage doesn't pass, then the only option I think the district has is remodeling as much of that building as we can, because the state is not going to allow us to continue, for instance, with those bathrooms up there.
If, if it doesn't pass, why can't we spend twenty-eight million and say, Todd, give us what we, what we want for twenty-eight million, let's find something we need? He will come up with something.
Give us what we need, say what we want.
You'll get what you want.
Chad and I agree, but that's exactly what we did. Uh, you know, cause we're, they're dire need of a high school. And the product we came out was, was something we felt like that the community would not be proud of. It was a very basic building, uh, concrete walls, uh, it was, it looked hideous. And had another cost, the cost went up.
You can doll at the front a lot for five dollars a square foot, you know, I mean, a lot.
But I mean, even doll at the front.
We were maxed out, we needed five more million, Craig was involved in, he didn't even have any infrastructure. There's no tech, technology. I, real quick, I know we get, but I sense Craig is here. And I know that Chris and Jennifer, and I'd like to hear it again, had some question about relocation kids. The plan y'all came up with, or do you remember that off the top of your head? Refresh my memory.
I'm gonna, I hate, I hate to cut out, I've gotta go, I've gotta, I have one o'clock on my schedule, I've gotta hit the road.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's what it would look like from a relocation standpoint. The top page is what we're trying to set out, it's all small. Second page would be relocating the high school where we currently stand, if we were to keep the new math and science wing on the new plans. And then that last page is kind of a breakdown of notes, just to kind of sum everything up with.
Good.
That's good.
I don't like that. I know, I know it's not ideal, but that's four hundred and fifty more students in those hallways. What happens if there's a fire? Can we put that many students in a building?
Yeah, I mean, you know, when we did our bus evacuations, had scum balls come in and look and, you know, when you have those double doors.
But bell times, like, those, those hallways are chaos as it is during bell times.
We got, it's, it's not pretty, that's just putting every single classroom
I know, Gary, but for, temporary for an entire school year for one kid is a lot. Temporary for two school years is a lot, like that's, it's not temporary when you're talking years.
My recommendation would be to shoot for a millage, if it fails, we build a nice high school without a gym, with air conditioning in the gym, four or five year number of ability.
And that's all we can do, but I think we have to all be on the same page of what our plan is.
When again, I'm just, I know, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse myself, I just wanna be transparent, that's it. I want everything out in front of the community, I want them to know, so if they didn't get everything they wanted and they understand that they made the choice, so this is all we can give you.
Okay, and I agree with Chris, that's one of the criticisms we got that I took to heart, we need more public meetings to say, here's what we're wanting to build, now if you want a gym, this is gonna cost this much more. If you want a high school, only a high school's gonna cost this, now why do y'all want it? Why are people coming for meetings?
Well, I think it's just the way we're
Why are you everybody here today?
I'll tell you, I'll tell you what happened the last time, Gary, is the people that are, that didn't wanna go there were people talking about the high school last time that I didn't wanna listen to. People that didn't go, they weren't, they weren't alumni, they weren't from our town, they didn't go to school here. Like, I mean, like, I don't wanna listen to somebody just trying to sell me a school. I wanna listen to the teacher, I wanna listen to the administrator, I wanna listen to somebody that works for the district, I want, like, those are the people I wanna listen to. And I want the plan in front of me and I wanna say, I wanted to know, this is what we planned, this is what we could have, we could have a prison if we drop it down ten million dollars, or we could have this and pass a millage, like, I don't want any comparisons.
But we, if you talk about the public, you know, we want the public's input, but they're not really
They try to say with them, like, you know, we're gonna have to figure out a way to go to them. I mean, it just, it just is what it is, where they are in the meeting for X, Y, and Z purposes, go to those organizations, meet the people and say, hey, can we come and present?
We went to Roderick Club, Kwanzaa, all of the
If, if it will help, I can, I can articulate all, like, what my plan is in all of that, because you know, I, I think this is one of those things where I spent a lot of years recruiting kids for a school that know, that, you know, I think it's the same process, right? Yes, I learned very quickly, you can't say, hey, we're gonna have a meeting over here, y'all come, right? What you have to do is you have to get in front of, like, the ministerial alliance and say, I wanna come to your church on Sunday at one o'clock, can we have a, a potluck? And let's just answer questions and let's talk about it, and let's, then I go to his church and your church and, and, you know, the ministry, and then we'll go to the, the chamber and then we'll go to Rotary, then we'll go to Optimist. So you will not be able to quote unquote sell the school idea by saying we're gonna have a meeting at the community center, y'all come to see us, cause that's not
I wanna get to the white person, I don't know the rules of them, I'm just throwing this out, I'm not trying to throw Chad or the buzzer thing, like, I mean, I don't care if I have to set up a table with Chad's or have him in store and say, I am here to answer questions, so when shoppers are going in and out, they have a curiosity question. Like, cause most of the time, this is what I hear and I know y'all do the same thing, they heard in what they just talking, I'm like, that is absolutely not even remotely true. It's so far from what, like, that was never said, so I don't know where that happened, but here's what, here's what's really going on. So I'm, that person, had they not had that conversation, they, they were annoyed as soon as they walked in the booth, because they heard something. And I just, again, it's just transparency, communication and if we're gonna use social media institution to our advantage for once and get out when it's from our official school page to say
But let's deal with facts.
Here's the information from our school page, these are the facts about, if you have a question about any of this stuff, get that out ASAP, now maybe they do start showing up to meetings, because they had curiosity questions from the post that were making that as factual information, because we have the information and we said it, we put it out, but you don't hear it from your neighbor.
Well, like, like, like we're doing those community surveys, if you start throwing out, hey, we're gonna build a high school, if you throw out a survey of what would you like to see in the high school, what would you agree with this or do you agree with this? What do you think about this versus this? People are gonna fill that stuff out, because that's what they care about, you're talking about their money. You put in the community survey, I know we barely get feedback on some of that stuff, but when you throw out a commi, survey about a high school, they're gonna answer it. Cause they wanna be involved and they wanna answer like what they feel about a gym versus how they feel about classrooms versus, you know, whatever. They wanna answer that stuff. And so I think, I mean, I really think I'm agreeing with him that social media is gonna be good. And I know I've been a little misreported, I have installed many of these basic pages, but I'm
That's just a plan without really having to build anything.
Because you can't, one page will post something, the main district reports about school board meeting, but then none of the other schools post about it and then you might have a parent only following the high school and then they don't ever see it. Or you might have somebody, the junior high might post something, junior high, that's sure amazing, I don't know who's doing that, posting about all the new teachers, I think it's great. But only if you're following the junior high page are you gonna see it. And so it's like, it doesn't count like the district.
And these are way where the district has one page in anything district wide, whether it's a new teacher, whatever, that goes to all pages. And then it's like, hey, there's a junior high dance, like, high school people
So you guys, you guys are just, you're articulating a conversation that we already had with our district communications director. As soon as that person gets on contract, which begins July one, we've, uh, cause we've already had those, those conversations that this is
She's gonna head around running, cause our timeline is tired.
Six weeks.
Yeah, I mean, August is gonna be
I mean, in a minute. She's gonna have it
It's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be an evolving process, just
Yeah, it'll take some time, good deal.
Alright, anything else? Meeting adjourned.